Welcome to your city commission meeting. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. In accordance with Kansas Open Meetings Act, K O M A, the meeting can be viewed live on channel two and via Facebook Live. The public is encouraged to view the meeting using one of those options. The Leavenworth City Commission meeting is open to the public with limited seating capacity. To mitigate the spread of COVID-19, face coverings and social distancing is required to attend the meeting. Refer to the agenda packet on the city website on how to reserve a seat and/or submit comments. Meetings are televised every day on channel two at 7:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. Study session, the first is the report from the Leavenworth Public Library.
Thank you Commissioner Lenhart. My name is Matt Noyanen. I am the director of the Leavenworth Public Library. Thank you for having me here tonight. I want to bring you up to speed on what was a very strange year for everybody, 2020. The data on these reports, of course, represents a serious drop in every aspect of library service as every other library in the United States experienced because of the health conditions, the closings, restricted access we many of us had imposed because of the spread of the disease to combat that. The nice thing is that nobody in the library caught the bug and not all the news was bad. The circulation in general was down as you would expect, but if you take a look at a few categories that I have in green, the use of eBooks went up 46%, as you can expect because people can use those without direct contact with anybody or download them from home. Streaming video also went up 59%. In the middle of the page, those are the three main services that we offer for digital books, digital audiobooks and movies, Overdrive, Hoopla and Canopy. So we had 5,368 people use our computers last year, but 7,391 used our e-content services, which is an increase of 26%. Our library programs went digital and the numbers were down, but not nearly as badly as we expected because all this technology was so new to everybody. We had never really even heard of Zoom until March and we brought it in, we adapted it and we started doing our programs using it in May. And I think that overall they were pretty successful. Non-library programs, a lot of people in the community use our meeting rooms and those are not have not been open four months, so the use of those was down. Interlibrary loan, we lend and borrow books from about 40 other libraries around Kansas in general. We will loan them to any library in America through the proper channels. But because so many libraries were closed, so many libraries were open and then closed, so many libraries were had reduced hours, all these numbers decreased. But you can see that the number of items we loaned to other libraries actually decreased pretty very, very, and that was a relatively minor decrease. And I think it's because we were open a lot and a lot of other libraries who were not open depended on us and those loans were going out all the time. We are the largest library in the Neckles region, so we're very much a resource for the other members. We have more items available, especially large print collections and some other specialized things that tend to be more expensive and tend to be out of the reach of some of the smaller libraries that we partner with. Now, when COVID landed, we knew that we had to adapt, adopt and improve. We already had planned to bring Canopy onboard and that started on April 1st. The timing was great because the library was closed by the public health, by the Health Department in March. It was bad because we normally do our best marketing face-to-face and we weren't able to do that. But Canopy was pretty successful. An average of 97 per month were borrowed, about 772 of those films that were used just from April through the end of this year. As I mentioned before, we went to a streaming and archiving system with all of our programs using Facebook Live and Zoom. 5,892 children, 295 adults watched them live. But the advantage of this technology that we kind of counted on and it actually materialized, if you have a library program in your building and you can't make it, you never see it. You missed it, we're not going to do it again. But this with an archive version, you can go to the library's website and watch that anytime. And 2,293 times, somebody looked at our archive program. That would have never happened before. So we're going to continue to use this technology even after we're back to doing more regular normal live programming. It's just a way to provide service to kids whose parents can't get them to the library, to daycare centers who may have kids that want to go to a program, but they can't get them all down at the same time or at the right time. So we learned a little and then we were going to use that for a good long time. Before school started, we started talking in June about what we can do to provide information and access for kids who are going to be learning from home and parents who are going to pull their hair out. Because if I were, when my kids were juniors in high school and they came to me and said, Dad, you know, help me with some, you know, Algebra II, sorry, I'm way out of my league here. So we gathered together, all of the best resources we could get ahold of, provided and built them on what we call the digital study room that everybody can access on our website. It provides direct links to those resources and 453 kids have used that. An average of about 91 a month. And it's much, in our opinion, it's much better than Wikipedia or Google. You could find a lot of really bad, outdated, inaccurate, undocumented information out there. These are genuine library resources. It's digital versions of the same kind of reference books and services that were traditionally found in public libraries. And I listed them all here in case you have any kids at home or you have somebody that is not quite familiar with this, but it's a wide variety. School center, general, there are a lot of college test prep. So you have seniors in high school that need to take college entrance exams. They can practice those tests online. I know you can spend a lot of money on a course that will help you learn or with your library card, you can log into this for free and do it at home at your leisure. Student success skills, generally classroom skills, career prep. So if you're thinking about, you know, what do you want to be when you grow up, there are ways that you can get in there and discover what careers, what kind of education do they require, what kind of training certification, a lot of that background. A lot of other resources that, and we tried to pick them so that we covered the wide variety of stuff. Explora is a very broad source of information for kids at school of all grades from elementary up through high school. But science, literature, reference, issues and controversies, languages and the World Almanac. We tried to find databases and other resources related strictly to the kind of subjects and specialty subjects that kids are going to be tackling at home in a home learning situation. Hoopla, which is one of our streaming content services, most people use it for watching movies or downloading eBooks, but they have at-home learning, which provides material for caregivers and again, that can help the parents who are trying to help their children learn. Homeschool with Hoopla and the Read Write Math provides activities and lesson plans. Then the web math I found really good when we looked at that because that would be where, that would be my go-to resource if I were a parent and my kids were, I was running up against math that I hadn't done in forever. So that's been pretty successful. On January 11th just this year, and I know this is in 2020, but we started planning in 2020, the Let Us Pick program, and you see that postcard in front of you. We sent those out to everybody who had an active library card in the city of Leavenworth, in Lansing and Easton. A lot of people are not comfortable possibly placing reserves, so you fill out a form that says, hey, I'm Bill, here's my email address and I like reading historical fiction or poetry or whatever. And we will, they send those requests in, we open the request, we go to poll three books, we call that person, say your books are ready and they come to pick them up at our curbside service. So far, 51 different patrons and 17 kids have used this. We just started it on the 11th, so I'm pretty happy. It's not a bad turnaround for a month. We did encounter some unemployment fraud. I'm not sure if the city's employees, there you go.
Yeah.
So all our information's out there for sale. Five bogus claims were made and we counseled everybody on our staff about what to do and we followed all the right procedures with the state and the federal government so that hopefully no one will get one of those nasty little 1099s that they shouldn't be getting. Now, for the near future, we are going to open for public access on Monday, the 22nd. We were always closed for President's Day and always did a full-day training there. We also closed today. So for two days straight, we provided training to everybody. We have new staff members who have yet to see the library fully open. We have other people like me who worked here for five or six years, but it's been almost a year since we have done certain things. So we kind of looked at it as spring training. You know, Mickey Mantle spent the offseason fishing, now you've got to start, you know, somebody's going to start chucking a ball at you. So on the 22nd, we're going to open up our regular hours, Monday through Thursday and Friday and Saturday. We're still not doing Sundays yet, but we'll be open from 9:00 to 11:00 and the facility will be open. Then we'll go to do a curbside from 11:00 to 2:00 because we still have a lot of people who are not comfortable coming in the library. They would prefer to stay out of a group setting, no matter how small or large it is. Plus, it's kind of nasty weather. Some of our elderly patrons, I'm sure, would rather wait in their car instead of try to go down an icy parking line. And then we'll open up again from 2:00 to 7:00 PM. Fridays, we close at 5:00, but it'll be that same pattern, open in the morning, curbside mid-afternoon and then open again later in the day. We also coordinated at the beginning of the year when the library normally starts doing VIDA, which is Volunteer Income Tax Assistance in January. But because the facility wasn't open, their volunteers were, and a lot of their volunteers are have certain factors that put them at high risk for catching the disease and experiencing the worst effects. We're going to open VIDA again after talking it over with the lead volunteer and that's going to happen when we're closed for curbside. So when you come up, if you come in to get your taxes prepared or help, it'll just be a drop-off service. You won't have to compete with parking for when the library is open. It won't, since we're limiting access to 50 people at a time, we won't have 50 people waiting to get taxes done, then we can't let anybody else in or vice versa. So we're hoping that by doing that during the time that we're closed, it will not, we won't run out into that limit, occupancy limit. And the people who come in to get their help won't feel like they are being overexposed to a large crowd of people in the building. We had, when we were open from 9:00 to 11:00 early, we had a limit of 30 and we never hit that. We came close a couple of times. We upped it to 50 this time because it's been a while since we've been open and we wanted to provide more access. So it'll be 50 people in the building for an hour. And we've handled that pretty well. The staff, we keep track of everybody that comes in. At the end of each hour, we give an announcement, if you came in at this time, please bring your material to the main desks to, so you can get it all checked out. Our summer reading program plans are well underway. I believe our youth services librarian has just about all of our programs scheduled. The possibility of using city parks has been explored. The theme is tales, tales and tails. So you had animals and stories, which works really well with kids. They love animals. Any questions at all about 2020, about?
I do. So with the curbside, I mean, is that something, even when things get back to maybe normal, do you think you'll always keep that? Do you get quite a few people that just like to do that in general?
I'm sure they would. The difficulty we have with it is literally staff. When you do, if you do curbside all the time, you need someone sitting right there at the curbside. So it may be something we could do and I absolutely know that it would be a great thing forever.
For some, yeah.
The library in Baser has a window built in. I mean, they have the facility right there, their building was built, it makes it a lot easier for them. It is definitely something we could discuss because there are a lot of people who really like that.
And also for the VIDA, so the individuals will just drop off their tax information, the volunteer will go out and make sure they have all the information they need. Will they then do their taxes? Will they have the person then come back and maybe sit down with them to go over it?
The VIDA volunteers have to, will have, they'll have people come in, they do an intake. Everyone has to sign a form.
Right.
Saying, you know, that I, that I'm giving this person permission to do it. They check that they have all of the forms and ID. Then that person will leave and they'll just do that drop-off. And then they'll do that from noon until 2:00. And then at 2:00, they'll take the forms and the information that was dropped off into our east room and do the preparation. So they'll be able to do that all electronically in our east room. We discussed this with them. Most of the needs for the people who use this service are very simple. They figure they could probably process 20, 30 of those in an hour, maybe an hour and a half.
Right.
So that'll start on Tuesday and then every Tuesday and Thursday, if you drop it off on Tuesday, you should be able to pick up your completed form on Thursday. But they will not sit in the room while the taxes are being prepared.
But when they come back to pick it up, are they going to have to come in to sign?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The thing is, nobody except a VIDA volunteer is allowed to handle that paperwork. They sign all kinds of agreements about confidentiality and protecting people's information. And the last thing I want to do is lose someone's tax form. That would be a very ugly situation. So they, I think it'll work out pretty well. Again, by having in that curbside time, it'll reduce the number of people in there. It won't create any real burden. We already have someone at the front doing curbside, so if someone comes up, is, are you here to drop off your tax form? Come on in. So we can manage that with our staff, we can manage it with this, we're going to place the VIDA volunteers socially distanced at a couple of tables over by our computer terminals so that they won't, we won't have a mass. We thought we could put them closer to our second airlock door, but we thought if we had a lot of people that showed up, you're going to have a line going out the door. And that, the group exposure is not what you want. So we're trying to make it feasible in a way that keeps people the proper distance apart and reduces the possibility of people catching the bug.
Are they, are the people that drop off their tax information, are they like making appointments or?
No, it, we talked about appointments. We did those last year. We've always done it first come, first served. Last year was the first time we did appointments. It seemed like because we're getting a late start.
Right.
And a lot of people might have already done their taxes, that the first come, first served wouldn't pose a problem. And again, if we do get a big bunch of people in because we're doing it when we're closed for curbside, we could have up to 50 people and not have to shut the doors.
Right.
Because if we had 30 people in there using the library and 50 people waiting to get VIDA, everybody gets to stand outside until someone leaves. And when you have people standing around in groups like that, when it's four degrees, it's supposed to get warmer, but still, it's, we're really trying to do it in a way that protects everybody. The volunteers, the staff and the people who need the tax assistance.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Griswold, did you have anything?
Yes, Director Noyanen, good to see you. Thank you for coming to update the city commission. The digital study room, a very nice initiative. Did you, did you have any discussions with the superintendent of USD 453, you know, the Leavenworth Public School District about this when you brought it online during the summer?
We didn't involve the schools in planning or designing it, but we did send this information out to all the schools. They have a communication system called Peach Jar that they use to notify all the students in the district and all their parents. So I believe they sent out a quick introduction to what the service is to everybody.
Good.
I want to say it's the Lutheran School.
Take them.
I think they put it right on their website.
Okay.
So we contacted all of the schools and they informed people at various levels and in their own way.
Very good.
To get the word out because this is, this stuff has been out there forever. It's really, really helpful to kids, but it's difficult to inform people about that.
Right.
And another thing we ran into, which is kind of strange, because these are organized and paid for, most of them by the State Library of Kansas, you have to be a Kansas resident to use them. We live right on the Missouri border, so if you'll know, you don't notice it, but sometimes your internet traffic is going to a server in Platt City. So you log onto Google, you're in Platt City, the signal comes back and the State Library says, you don't live in Missouri, or you don't, you live in Missouri. There's not a darn thing we could do to change that. I don't think Time Warner or Google is going to listen to the director of the Leavenworth Public Library and say, would you fix your geolocation, please? So we also included it in case this happens and it's very inconsistent. Sometimes it happens, sometimes it doesn't. So to get around that, you get a state library card and we have a form for that right on the website too, soon as we learned this was happening. So the directions are, if you run into this problem, click on this, fill out this form, we'll get it taken care of. So the next time you log in, if it says you're not from Missouri, just enter your state library card number and you'll be good to go. It doesn't happen at all to libraries who are in the middle of the state. But it happens down in Wichita and some of the border towns because again, that traffic might go across that state line and come back, which fools the databases into thinking you, you're not in Kansas, you have no access.
The other question I have, thank you. On staff, did you have, have you had a significant turnover in staff during the past year?
No, we were able to, I think we've built a very strong staff and I was really, really afraid that if we laid people off, you know, if we, that we would lose some very talented and very experienced and really high-quality people. By paying people for their full hours through this whole time, we have been able to keep them on staff. We've had one person retire, had nothing to do with COVID, it was just some people around here decided that they're just done. So we are really, I'm very, very keen on this crew of people and hope, and I know that when we reopen for the public, that the service is going to be great.
Okay, thank you. Just one question. With your maximum capacity of 50, let's say it was a year ago before COVID or COVID wasn't here, on a good day, how many do you have in there normally?
Hmm, we were, boy, I didn't bring all those reports with me. Usually we had, the biggest crowds we had when we would have a program.
Yeah.
I don't have.
But I mean, just your estimate on a, you know, 4:00 on a, maybe is summer bigger crowds than during the school year?
No, I'd say that the Mondays year-round are the biggest crowd. It doesn't really matter.
How many normally would?
In the same hour, I would say if we had 50 in the same hour, it would be, it would be a pretty sizable and a good number.
So limiting to 50 is not really going to hamper, not going to inconvenience that many people.
No, I don't.
But somebody is keeping track then.
Yes.
If you've got 50, then, does 50 include your staff or?
No, it's.
Okay, 50 patrons.
Right. So when people come in the door, we'll have a table right in through that second airlock, we'll give people, here's your card with the time that you came in.
Yeah.
And if we need to bump that up, we've already discussed this too, if, we never hit 30 when we had the restriction, when it was 30-based, but that was when the disease was really very active and a lot of people were cautious, super cautious. If we bump it up to 50 and we run into that where we're stopping people at the door, I don't think by border I have any problem at all with adjusting that upward flexibly. Usually, again, the biggest crowds we ever get when we have a program, you have 100, 150 kids at a time.
Yeah.
I had 200 kids, well, Santa had 200 kids on his lap every, you know, on a Saturday in December. But I really don't expect that and if it happens, we will, I think accommodate it.
Okay, thank you.
And maybe, I'm kind of hoping we do. It's been a long time. I'm hoping that the tide kind of bursts and everybody just.
Are excited to get back.
Rushes back in. Yeah, that would be great. On the last page, I know that I talked with Ruby Mullin about this. I just heard about Senate Bill 13, literally like three days after it was introduced into the Senate and I know Commissioner Lenhart was at our board meeting last week. And my concern about it is the way that it fundamentally changes a few things about how the library budget is handled. The bill would prohibit a governing body of a taxing subdivision to levy a tax rate in excess of the revenue neutral rate unless a resolution or ordinance has been approved by the governing body. I also, just today, got an update. Apparently the House has amended it so that it won't go into effect until the end of this year. The original bill was like, this is rolling now. So I guess if, one way of looking at this from my perspective is that it could create the equivalent of a freeze based on FY 2020 revenues unless the city would approve, not a change in the mill rate, but a change in the revenue that that mill rate generates. And the second part is that when the lid was in place, when the city calculated its maximum rate and you couldn't raise it above the inflation rate, library revenues were excluded from that calculation. And apparently this bill throws the library's rate into that too. This is from the Kansas Department of Administration Municipal Services Office. I believe the city will include the library levy, the aggregate levy to compute the revenue neutral rate. Whereas before, again, when the, with the tax lid was in place, our mileage didn't count against the city's cap, basically. Again, it's been amended by the House. I haven't even had a chance to read it. I just went to my office about an hour ago to print these out and saw the email and downloaded the new House version. The only thing I noted immediately was that they did delay, they did build in the, you know, a delay on the implementation of whatever passes until the end of this year.
As I understand it, I was reading about it today, I think they've watered it down even a bit more. Could be, could be wrong, Mr. Kramer, correct me if I'm wrong, that original intention was if there's any raise, if there's any increase in the monies brought in by ad valorem tax greater than 3% or whatever inflation rate might be, then it'd have to, a petition could be signed and we'd have to take it to the voters. From what I understand now, we just have to post, each city taxing entity has to post a proposed budget for 10 days in advance, 10 days before the hearings to allow people to come to speak that they're notified. And, you know, once that notification goes through and we hear from the public or we don't hear from the public, not we, but various cities and counties in the state can then take their action.
Right.
Am I, is that, what are you hearing?
The differences that you're talking about actually were mainly from last year's truth in taxation to this year's truth in taxation. The newest Senate Bill 13 did not have anything in there about anything to the voters. It requires the commission pass a resolution indicating that they plan to collect more revenue. It's independent of the mill rate, that you intend to collect more revenue than you did the year before. So you have to do that. And the second step is you just simply have to hold a public hearing that where that's the only thing on the agenda. So the public gets to come and discuss with you that you're planning to collect more revenue. So, and, you know, talking about the exemption of the library, one of the people who put the tax lid in place, the same group, their biggest concern with the product they ended up with, even though it was their idea, was that there was too many exemptions. There is exemption for growth, there is an exemption for infrastructure and public safety and libraries. So at the end of the day, the bill that they passed, they realized didn't have the effect that they wanted it to. So Matt is correct that the current version of Senate Bill 13 and in the House, and I did see that they do plan to go forward for next year, so it wouldn't affect this year's budget or the budget that we put in place for 2022, would essentially, unless you took those actions, freeze the amount of revenue. So for the library, if their levy cap is 3.75 mils and let's say they bring in $800,000, just picking a round number, the next year they could only bring in $800,000 even if it was 3.65 mils. They couldn't go up to that unless the commission were to take those steps going forward.
And I think the original Senate bill said that the county was supposed to send out a letter to all the taxpayers with the cumulative effect of all the different mill rates that based on their assessed value. So a homeowner, you know, if my home was assessed at a greater value than it was the last time, this is how that will impact me. The revenue neutral rate and the amount that if, that would change if some of the tax, if the mill rates, even if the mill rates stayed the same, your assessed value went up, so you're going to pay a little more. I was also concerned because the original bill talked about maintenance and certain improvement, and maintenance and things like that not counting. And I wondered, what does that mean? So I contacted the county appraiser and he said that that, that's not an issue, that they have never used a new roof, a fixed-up porch or anything like that to add to the assessed value of a residence in Leavenworth County. It also concerned me because there's not a lot of new construction going on here, a lot of renovation of homes. And if the renovation of those homes would not be considered an increase in the value, that's, that's pretty bad. But apparently that's, that's not the case. Again, the gentleman I spoke with from the county said that that will still be a value-added. If you, if you've got a house, you bought it for 20, you gut it, flip it for 80, those improvements are counted as an evaluation increase, so.
Mr. Kramer, are school districts?
So school districts, you have to send the information, but they are not required to hold the public hearing.
Which I find odd, I mean, I.
Yeah, you would feel that maybe the library would be in the same boat as the school district, but again, it would be folded under the city's mills as it is levied by the city.
Yeah, because every school district in any city in the state, if city, county, school district mill levies, and usually the school district accounts for 40 to 50% of the entire taxes, while county and cities will be, you know, combined will be about the same or a little bit more. But your school district is your biggest taxing entity in any city in the state of Kansas.
They also have a far greater. They also have a far greater political voice than, than your average public library. I mean, stop touching school funding in any state, it's kind of a third rail, you really have to, as a politician, have to be very careful. And our, since we get nine, anywhere from eighty-seven to ninety percent of our funding from real estate taxes and only real estate taxes for both our general fund and our employee benefits, I'm very sensitive to any kind of legislation that's proposed to the state capital that could have an unintended impact on, on the library. So it's, uh, I, I was relieved to get a couple of answers from some people. After I talked to my board Thursday night, I got some better information. Again, when I saw the update, the House amendment to it today, I saw that it would be delayed for a full calendar year. One of my main concerns is we're, we're going to start doing our budget in March, what do I, what do I do? If there, if this is going to be a very complicated and controversial process, well, how should I budget?
And the cities have the same thoughts about potentially cities having to prepare two budgets. One revenue neutral, um, and then one, uh, one not. So, I mean, it is a reality going forward, potentially, we, we talked about that with the tax lid before, there was a lot of exemptions crafted into the tax lid, about the city having to essentially have two separate budgets. If the, uh, if it, the measure passed, when it was going to be put to a voter, if it didn't. So, that may be something that, well, you know, we can talk to, to Matt about, but if it does, you know, and this is just the House. So now the House has a version, the Senate has a version, so they'll have to come together and we'll see what passes. But on, once the dust settles, um, that may be something where you do have essentially two budgets. Um, and you have to wait and see which budget is the one that you're going to have for the next year.
When does reconciliation happen, or when, what, what they call a turnaround day?
Yeah.
Mid-March?
Yeah, I mean, summertime around there, I can't remember the exact date. And then after that, we'll see, actually where it goes.
Yeah, the average, I'm just looking at our general fund revenue from two thousand nine through nineteen. The average increase for that entire time is three thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars over ten years. So the impact on a homeowner, not that great. As, as values have, have changed and dropped and fluctuated quite sharply in the last ten years. Have a little growth, a little, little off, and that's always pretty much the way that, that libraries have always worked, you know. And when real estate values go down, you, your revenues drop. When they, when they improve, you could catch up a little bit. So I'm hoping that that process will, will still remain in place because it's, I've been and heard of, uh, the taxpayer bill of rights in Colorado, different things that they've done in Ohio and Louisiana, that basically create new bottoms every time you turn around. And then by the time the, 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 the growth rates that they sometimes even allow, you never catch up after, after a major cut. If you lose, for example, one year we did a twenty-eight thousand dollars less than the year before. If that would then become our new.
What mill rate, when you say it's twenty-eight thousand dollars less than the year before, what?
That, the mill rate was the same, it was still three, seven, five.
Yeah, that was the max, but what did your budget, uh, request?
Oh, I don't even, I can't.
I, I, I think you may be, uh, the numbers may not be a hundred percent correct there. If you go at three point seven five mils consistent from two thousand nine to two thousand, uh, twenty, I'll guarantee you that, uh, the total increase has been more than thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Well, the, in two thousand thirteen, our general fund revenue was eight hundred and forty, the next year was eight twelve.
That, but, uh, once again, that was the budget you submitted, not, you have, there's a maximum lid of three point seven five mils.
Right.
You submit a budget against that, and if you submitted a budget for eight hundred and four thousand, you weren't cut to eight hundred and four thousand, that was the budget you submitted.
Right.
So, that wasn't because of, uh, a drop in ad valorem taxes.
Well, over time, I think the only, I think there've only been a couple of times when it wasn't a full three, seven, five, and it was, I think there was a couple of years, and I don't have those rates in front of me. Uh, but in general, it's been anywhere from three, seven, three to five. So the, the differences in the amount of mils that were actually collected in a year have not varied all that much. Even if the budget that we submitted, uh, could be paid for by a mill rate underneath the cap. So the, uh, but again, that, the, the way that these, the, the fluctuation kind of naturally happens in, in assessed values, is, is something I, I really hope, I really hope the state would just sort of leave alone. Because we get good years and bad years. And if you get a really bad year, and that's a revenue neutral rate, and then you're stuck at your revenue neutral rate, that becomes a permanent bad year, so.
Well, uh, thank you for the update on your report, uh, Mr. Nguyen, and I'm excited for, and see what, uh, hear what happens February twenty-second, good luck with that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I'm sure there's a lot of other people that are excited to get back in there and, and especially helping with the taxes, that's great.
We had hoped we could have a big party, but it's still not quite.
You have quite a few people, don't you normally?
Usually about two hundred.
Yeah, that's a lot, so, yeah, thank you, did you have anything else?
No, nothing, thank you.
Right, thanks all, take care and stay warm.
Yes, you too.
Take care.
Okay, second on the study session, citywide spring cleanup, two thousand twenty-one update.
This will be our public information officer, Melissa Bauer.
Hi guys, um, the city of Leavenworth would like to hold a pandemic-friendly citywide spring cleanup on April tenth, twen- twenty twenty-one. We think that, um, with the public increase in the knowledge about the pandemic and how to prevent the spread, um, we can safely hold this event. And it also helps keep our city streets clean. And I think it benefits our children by teaching them how small acts can make a difference in our community. Um, so just a couple of different things that we're considering is, um, we wouldn't have a kickoff event. The teams, the, the volunteer trash pickup teams would just meet, um, wherever they're going to be picking up trash. And we're going to try to get as many of them as we can to kind of start at the same time, I think that'd be kind of fun to try to feel like we're together a little bit more. Usually during the spring cleanup, ev- every year we have, they'll get like a box that'll have their t-shirts, trash bags, gloves, and this year we can just add disposable, uh, face masks. I think you guys know the fire department has arranged to hand out a, a lot of those, and they have some left over that, uh, they can help us out with that. And, and then on the other side of it is the service center. They do provide the same services that you would get at a free first Saturday, which is an open brush site, recycling center, large item drop-off, and electronics recycling. We coordinate with the Leavenworth County Transfer Station once a year during the citywide spring cleanup to provide the household hazardous waste drop-off, which is, especially if you've been in the military, you guys all know that, the, the chemical, like the household cleaning chemicals, paints, solvents, uh, those kinds of things, you don't want to dispose of them, um, in the, in the trash. So we'll bring, bring them down to the household hazardous waste and we can take care of that. We are really lucky, we've had for many years Citizen Savings and Loan partner with us for a paper shredding event. And it, um, you might have seen it, so we get people that ask all year, where, when are you guys going to have the paper shredding event? They drive up, uh, the volunteers at the bank will take the boxes and, um, the, the truck that we get, um, they shred it right there on-site. Um, and so we held this last year, even though we were not able to hold the spring cleanup, we did have a paper shredding event in August. And it was really great, um, that, you know, the bank staff were really careful about, uh, the pandemic, they always wear the face coverings and, it went off pretty well, I thought. And then at the paper shredding event, we usually have a staff member there to kind of help out. And, um, they'll collect things like boxes and bags that, um, the, the truck won't shred. Yeah, so, um, if you guys have any questions, I'm kind of excited to get started with, uh, letting people know about it, they've been really anxious to, to, to do this. I'm not sure if we're going to have more of a response or, or less of a response, we'll just kind of have to see.
What, uh, I have a couple of questions for you, Melissa. So, the, you said the city will provide packages, like boxes with what, t-shirts and all that, and where are the teams or people going to pick that up at?
Usually we have the, either they'll pick them up at the service center.
Okay.
Sometimes if it's a really large team, we can deliver that to them if I know that, oh, they're going to be here, um. They, oh, and I forgot, these are, so these are the ones that we had for last year, and we got really lucky because they don't have a date on them.
I know, I know.
So, so we can reuse some of these, I am hoping that we will get, uh, more, so that we can order more.
And do you know for the, um, the Citizen Savings and Loan, uh, for the paper shredding, is that, do you know what the times are for that by chance?
Uh, usual, oh gosh, I'd, I'll have to remember, I'll have it on a flyer.
Okay.
So it's usually about, like, maybe, uh, like ten to two or something like that.
And that's, uh, you said both locations?
Yeah, both bank locations.
One downtown, okay.
Usually we tell people ten and they show up at nine-thirty, so we reserve the truck a little early just so they can get started and move on through.
And then, um, how long has the city, do you know, been doing the spring cleanup?
At least since two thousand eight, um. Yeah, there was a, there was a, I was told there was a volunteer, is it Jerry? A, a city volunteer or somebody who wasn't a, an employee that was a community member that organized something. And then, um, there was a previous public information officer that kind of made it into a one-day event, um, so.
And you have normally quite a few, uh, teams or volunteer groups?
Yeah, we usually have, um, at least forty teams, and the sizes might vary, you might have, you know, a, a dad and his child picking up trash, or we might have, like, there's one team that meets, it's a hundred, Fort Leavenworth Boy Scouts that come, goes to a park and picks up trash, and they have them very organized on how, so I make sure that they get the same grid every year because they like, they like to keep their, their area.
I think we have about fifty-two grids, don't we, something like that?
Something like that, yeah, yeah.
So the more, the more groups we can get, the better in terms of getting the coverage we want.
No, you know, this is really exciting, and I'm excited that all these, you know, other services, the brush side recycling, everything is in one day. People can get quite a bit done, and, uh, but, yeah, that's all I had, uh, Commissioner Price here, did you have anything?
No, it, it's a great program and everybody, uh, that gets involved really enjoys it. Uh, as Commissioner Griswold said, I think, would you say fifty-two sectors in the city and, uh, what's amazing to anyone that ever participates is the slop that some people throw out of their cars. I mean, it is unbelievable what, in this day and age, what people just drive by and throw out. It's, it's criminal, obviously, we have a littering, uh, ordinance, but still catching them is, is pretty tough. I hope some, somehow, some, that, that declines, but, uh, it sure hasn't shown any, uh, any decline over the years that I know of. But it is, uh, a lot of cleanup does happen, and it, it's great. And if the days of, you know, April tenth usually can be a fairly nice day. Boy scout group, uh, troops, girl scout troops, uh, ROTC, church groups, whatever, it's just a good day. And I understand about not having to kickoff, but all the juice and, uh, donuts was, uh, uh, really brought in a lot of people to, has a good time. Sorry, we aren't having that.
We hope one day we can have that again.
Well, you put something that, I don't know, some kind of donut certificates or something?
We're gonna, we're gonna look into that, yeah, we're not sure how that, how that would work, the logistics are kind of.
Well, the other thing you have to consider then, what was left over, a lot of times I'd take them to the fire station, so they, they kind of, you know, they, they said, you know, where's our donuts?
Might have to think of that too. Commissioner Griswold, did you have anything?
Ms. Bauer, I think it, it's, it looks like a very, very good plan. You know, the only thing I would think it'd be, um, and you've probably already thought of this, but kind of from the marketing standpoint, I know we're not going to get everybody together in terms of, you know, at, at Warren Middle School, but maybe a, like a two-minute marketing video to get people kind of revved up, um, and put out on our Facebook site and our webpage. That would be my recommendation, just, you know, make it a little fun and, uh, if, if you could make arrangements to do that, I think it would help maybe, even getting it out ahead of time to engender some, um, interest from some groups who may not have, you know, done it before.
Yeah.
So, that's my one recommendation.
Ma'am, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay, no, Melissa, thank you very much.
Thanks, Melissa.
Okay, review two thousand twenty-one pavement management, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. We've asked, uh, put together a policy report to present to the commission the proposed twenty twenty-one, uh, pavement management program. I was going to go over some background, Taylor has a map of, that's the same one as, that is in the policy report. If you have questions on a specific area or, uh, in, anything else in general. But, uh, the programs that we are running, uh, last year and this year really had their origins in two thousand sixteen when we had the digital, uh, independent objective pavement, uh, measurements done by Stan Tech. Showed us what, uh, what we had, uh, and we said, uh, we need to address a lot of things in a hurry. And we did a, uh, several large granite seal programs and focused on twentieth street repairs from, uh, Spruce Street South to Eisenhower. And in two thousand and twenty, the city commission, uh, upgraded the, uh, the amount of money that was available for us to, uh, put into the pavement management program to about two million dollars. And our goal this year is also about two point one million dollars, uh, for the overall program. Uh, Affinitus Engineers, uh, has designed, uh, the program for this year and last year and, uh, a couple of previous years. Chris Farney with Affinitus is on the call here this evening, if you have questions, uh, of him, uh, or his firm. They've put up with a lot of, uh, sharp corners and changes that we've done this year as we've, we've gotten to where we are today. Uh, additionally, the city commission asked staff to, uh, begin to refocus on park, city parking lots. Uh, last year we looked at, uh, two parking lots, uh, one at the northwest corner of, uh, Third and Delaware and the other immediately east of the Pullman Restaurant. We did repair the one at Third and Delaware in the two thousand twenty program. It needs new striping, which we'll do once the weather warms up. And we will, uh, included in this current program is the, uh, parking lot immediately east of the Pullman. Additionally to that, Parks Department has, uh, a need for some, uh, work done at Cody Park, and we have worked with them to identify their needs and to find the most cost-effective way to, uh, to deal with them. And that is also included, will be included in the bid package for the, uh, pavement management program. One of the things that we've, uh, done, uh, even as last year was going on, uh, but certainly once it was over, was evaluate, if what we were doing made, uh, particularly good sense, and specifically the granite seal program. The, the granite seal program, uh, in a kind of a broad kind of engineering sense, it really works fine, but it takes some things to do that. We've found that streets that had a lot of driveways, uh, got degraded, the, uh, the, uh, chips, if you will, people pulling in and out of their driveways, and streets that have at least a moderate traffic volume, whether they have parked cars on them or not, uh, seem to do fairly well. Uh, we also, uh, confirmed, uh, what many other communities have said, uh, that modern cul-de-sacs do not work well with, uh, granite seal. Uh, we looked at a variety of options and alternatives. Uh, the most interesting, uh, one we, uh, we met was with, uh, one of our contractors that, uh, is a granite seal contractor. And I said, "How do you keep this from happening?" And he said, "That's simple, you didn't use enough granite seal, you need to do it at least twice." And I said, "We're not at all remotely interested in that, uh, we're going to come up with a better plan." And we did, that is not part of our, of our, uh, of our project. I have no reason to doubt that what he said is, uh, anything but true, but I was not willing to go down that route. Our staff, uh, contacted several of the Johnson County cities, uh, and with the unified government, about how they handle, uh, cul-de-sacs and kind of pavement that is really a little too worn out for granite seal. And several of them mentioned this, uh, uh, it's a proprietary product called Pressure Pave. It is similar to a slurry seal in that the, uh, the asphalt is placed on the surface, they have a mechanism set up. It applies pressure to that which forces the asphalt down into the cracks of the pavement. And they have been able to reasonably make repairs to degraded pavements far beyond what we would consider doing with the granite seal. It really, really gets into the, uh, kind of the milling overlay. The Pressure Pave people, uh, we've worked with them the last, uh, year or two on trying to find a, a way to see if their product works in our community. The truth is, uh, even though it is included in this year's, uh, uh, program, this is smaller than they would normally set as a minimum, uh, because of the move-in of their equipment, but I, I said. this is smaller than they would normally set as a minimum uh because of the move in of their equipment, but I I said that we're not going to go uh much more, I think it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this pressure paved streets that we've identified. I did not feel comfortable recommending that we use their minimum, which I think was something on the order of three hundred thousand dollars or more. And they were willing to come uh do this as a as essentially a test for us to see if we like their product. And we're looking forward to seeing what the results are. We prepared kind of an estimate after working this thing around with Affinist, we had a couple of face-to-face meetings, our team has been out to look at each of these streets, some with representatives of Affinist and some just internally. And we've ended up with kind of the operational numbers at the top of the second page uh where we identify uh costs for city uh city parking lots. Uh the milling overlay portion of the project is the single largest expense of one point seven million dollars. Uh there's a granite seal portion and a pressure paved portion. Uh we received a lot of positive comments from the restriping uh that we did last year, so we have added uh the goal is to uh re-stripe uh Tenth Avenue from Vilas or so south uh to Eisenhower and then Eisenhower uh Road to the uh east from I can't remember exactly where it shows on the on their uh on the map, but essentially Dylan's East uh to improve those uh stripings of, there's some repair work that will go on in the vicinity of uh uh on the east of Stray Park Road intersection. Uh but the the striping, uh we wanted to keep doing that, there was a lot of positive comments on that. And then, of course, the Cody Park work that the Parks Department is looking forward to do. As we put this together, we tried to keep in mind uh some of the points that are identified immediately below that. Uh try to do the right thing to the right street. We tried to make sure that streets that we'd identified that we would do last year would be done this year in case we didn't get them done for a variety of reasons. Take another look at granite seal with some kind of revised parameters and see if it will continue to be an effective tool for us. And there's some granite seal uh in this in this program and also uh the the pressure pave portion of it. And granite seal and pressure pave may be separate contracts, they're fairly narrowly focused uh construction techniques. Uh but the uh in the past, we've kind of rolled them all into one, I think you pay a little bit of a premium for that with the general contractor's markup on managing a wholly self-contained contractor or subcontractor. So that's that's basically the direction that we're headed. Uh and then we identified a street that if we do get to the end of the program, if we have extra money for patching we did not need to do or something happens that we're not able to uh do do what we thought we would be able to do, that we could go essentially either just pave or with the minimal work, uh we could simply find a way to make it make it better. When they identified Cherokee Street uh from Broadway East to Seventh Street, we might be able to go a block or two uh with excess uh funds if we end up uh as we did last year with enough money that we could have done uh done a little bit more. This is the program that staff is recommending that the city commission review and approve. Chris is here on the uh on the call if you have questions about him or he wants to talk about how much fun this was this year. But we are excited to be moving this forward. Really excited to look at a different product that seems to have performed well in multiple communities in our area with this pressure pave.
Okay, um yeah, Mr. McDonald, I have some questions. So on that pressure pave, you know, uh how long has it been around?
Oh, several years.
Okay.
It's it's not new in the last two or three years, it's it's got a history of multiple years.
And from your understanding or I know you said Mike Cooper and several others went down to Johnson County and that and got to see it. Um did they happen to say how long that it lasts?
It's comparable uh to a good granite seal or slurry seal. I think most of the projects they looked at were at least a year, at some were two years old. They also went to the unified government where there, excuse me, there was an actual project in progress. Uh they had a lot of questions about it. They were able to talk to the designers at the unified government as well as the contractor doing the work uh to resolve the concerns that they saw in the process of the of the project.
Okay, and so so of all the streets uh repairs that we're doing this year, um is there an order that you have them in?
There's uh no particular order other than we are hoping we can get the granite seal and the pressure pave out as separate contracts as quickly as possible. The rest of them are generally um kind of centrally located, kind of north of Limit and along Tenth Avenue. So I I think we'll leave that up to the contractor.
Right.
They've they've been able to do these, once they get here in what, you know, less than sixty days, uh get them get them milled and get them paved. Uh the green lines uh in the map are the milling overlay project and there's some nice long straight stretches of of things in there with the some Tenth Avenue and I believe there was uh uh work on Fifth Avenue was edge mill. And an edge mill is a type of milling, we don't mill the entire surface, we mill uh we mill the edges, maybe four feet from zero to typically one and a half to two. And that lets us match the curving better and get a positive drainage from it. It saves a lot of money in milling and but we do pave the entire street uh when we do that edge mill and paving.
So um and most of the, well, all we want it all done, I guess, this year, so probably starting in the spring.
Yeah, our goal is to get this out to bid as quickly as we can if it quits snowing. But it's uh yeah, we want to want to move this along, we've got other things to work on as well.
And I just have one other thing, uh I got a lot of positive feedback and uh about, maybe you can explain this a little bit. When some of the streets were redone and then the manhole covers, then they came back and did sort of like a concrete. So it was more of a smoother.
Yeah, we've uh we try to watch what the others are doing and we noticed that a lot of communities uh south of the river, if you will, had uh modified how they reset their manhole lids for sanitary sewer or storm sewer. And w- we had uh kind of been doing it traditionally where uh you kind of mill out around and you raise it up with some shims and some bricks and you patch it in. And we'd noticed but hadn't really thought through it all the way that, you know, you hit them with a snowplow, it knocks them loose, you kind of clang and bang over the top of it with a car or heavy truck. It just didn't work right and we talked to uh others that we saw these concrete patches that they were doing and they said that has uh once the road's paved, they will come back and uh they try to cut, we call them the diamonds, and in the direction of traffic. So among other things, your snowplow blade doesn't hit a big flat surface that's worn out, which is hard on everything. Uh but it allows, it's a much larger area than we had normally been working in for the process that we had been using. So they can get the manhole lids set separately or set well, they come in and do it, that's all they do. They're not trying to hurry up and get out in front of a contractor or get it exactly right and then you have the contractor try to pave to something that's not right. Uh they come in and set the uh set the manholes to the right elevation and we think it's worked out well.
Well, yeah, I do too and like I said, a lot of compliments from that, how smooth it is.
Thank you.
Yep, uh that's all I have. Uh Commissioner Price here, did you have anything?
Uh on granite seal, um I'm just curious as to some of the successes in the city, in your opinion, and some of the failures, or I don't want to say failures, but not not as not as good. I know cul-de-sacs. On a success to me, uh Lawrence Avenue from Spruce to Cherokee seems like it was a great granite seal and it has stood the test of time and didn't have any adverse effect of among the residents along that street. Are there other streets that are examples of great usage uh granite seal?
Well, that that one stands out. I believe there are others and I know my particular block, I was chasing loose chips for a long, long time. And we got to looking at it and we think that that was done of that was one of the last streets they did and we think they pushed the weather too far. So that's the uh that that hurt is on some of them, but the the ones that are the most successful are exactly what you described, they're long. They're they're straight, straight runs of street, they don't have a lot of things, uh sharp turning movements that occur on them. Uh and even on, and I can't think of them.
Muncie, Muncie East of Tenth is a good one.
Muncie East of Tenth was uh was was another good one.
Oh, from Tenth Avenue East on Muncie was granite seal? Yeah, that is good, yeah, yeah, I drive that.
Uh and even if the cars are parked there, they're not doing sharp movements.
Yeah.
And we've found that uh we get better performance out of those. I think we're adding another sweeping to, I think last year we went from two to three and that was pretty effective, but uh we have talked that we really ought to go to four, I'm not sure where it ended up in this estimate.
When you say they push the weather, does does it, is it have to be done between sixty and eighty degrees or?
Right, there's a there's a weather and a dampness spec and I think they uh I remember the morning they did my street, it was a heavy uh dew that morning and the temperature and everything was right, but I think it was a little dampish, uh more so than it ought to have been.
Okay.
It's a it's a good lesson in humility, among other things.
And I think you did realize cul-de-sacs don't don't seem to work very well.
No, they they don't. We we had other ideas that we just said, no, let's just try this pressure pave, it may solve some of these problems in a in a much larger project down the road.
And I think, I'm sure you consider it and Affinist considers it, uh if you are using the granite seal, the heaviest use on where it's going to happen that you have to consider are city trash trucks. Uh because they come in, sometimes they have to do a three-point turn to get out of there, but if on straight a straight shot, it's not a problem.
Right.
But other ones, I mean, literally, on a hot day, they're cutting into the asphalt.
Yeah, I think a lot of them.
Breaks apart.
Yeah, yeah.
Problems that we saw were driven by trash trucks, even though I think that in many cases they waited till the next day.
Yeah.
And it still had the force to deform uh the granite seal and those cul-de-sacs.
Yeah, thank you, that's all I have.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I just got a a question or two and maybe a comment. Um what's the first thing? Oh, uh the work that's going to be done this spring and the summer and maybe the early fall, that's based on the design work work that Affinist did last year?
It it started with that, uh basically we identified uh the commission that this was the type of program we thought we could we could do a lot more replaced or uh pave milling overlay and get out of such large granite seal or other chip seal projects. So we identified a variety of of streets. I think this is, we looked at that uh and this kind of grew out of out of that proposal to address the issues that I'd identified in the policy report, but.
Yeah, my only point is is that, I mean, there's a process to this, they're looking at design a year ahead of time versus, you know, what what work's going to be done, correct? Because a part of this uh proposal is for Affinist to do uh some design work for twenty twenty-two.
Well, it may be a time to uh to do an RFQ for another firm. But we would we would still need to have money for that firm to do that. Affinist has done an outstanding job for us. But they have been been doing it for some time and we've want to consider perhaps uh you know, get her one to to take a look inside and outside and see if we want to continue. I'm sure they would uh apply to continue this work. Uh but I know there are other firms that say they can do a fine job also.
Quality assurance, quality control, was that primarily in-house or does Affinist help uh you and you and your team, Mr. McDonald, as far as the quality assurance, quality control?
Almost all of the uh inspection, construction inspection work has been done uh with our forces internally. Uh if we are busy on other projects, uh we may have a light contract with Affinist to come assist us. If say we had two or three contractors operating at the same time, if we had a granite seal project going on at the same time, there was a milling overlay project. But we we try to use our own forces, we have uh our project manager, Mike Stephen, has two engineering technicians. Uh and they're uh they're pretty good at chasing contractors around, keeping notes, taking pictures, sorting it out.
And looking at the um two thousand twenty-one milling overlay, one of the big stretches is along Tenth Avenue from it looks like just south of Spruce down to Michigan, correct?
Yes.
And then I think that's good because it kind of reinforces what was either done in uh early twenty twenty or maybe it was late twenty nineteen. You know, we did from um was it Michigan to Vilas in terms of what the work that was done, so that project went very, very well and so I I think that's really good to reinforce that and get a longer stretch of road that has been modernized. So I just, that's that's just one of my comments.
Yeah, we tried, we tried to build on uh pre- success of previous years, it's not always the next year.
Right.
But we try to uh we try to make those visible statements, I know that's important to the commission.
Yeah.
Uh that you can see where uh you're, it's either in your neighborhood and you see it or you see it on the street you drive all the time.
A little bit of a segue into a specific question that I have and it's over on Twentieth Street, it's the work that was done. I think we did twenty twenty-two fairly significant sections of Twentieth Street between Spruce uh not the entire, but certain sections between Spruce and Metropolitan. And in twenty twenty, and I'd see that um the question I have is that that northern um sec- section or segment that we did, there's a um it was done well except there's a like a concrete bridge and then there's Dakota, the intersection there where it's kind of rough. So what what what's going on there and can we expect either in twenty twenty-one or maybe twenty twenty-two to to take care of those two light areas within that segment that we did in twenty twenty?
Uh the intersection, and I'm not sure what the other area you referred to, sir.
It was, it's the bridge just south of that intersection.
Right.
So it's what, Twentieth and Dakota, but it's.
Yeah, and it's Dakota, it's Dakota.
Three Mile Creek there, right, south of, north of Sportsfield.
Yeah, bridges are special cases, uh we'll need to take a closer look at that. Uh currently, uh the, I don't believe that intersection is in this, if we see what the money.
Yeah, I would say, I thought it was supposed to, because I thought it was supposed to be included, but just take a look at it. And I know that, I know for that bridge, probably more expensive because of the concrete, but that that intersection at Dakota and Twentieth is pretty rough right now and I thought we were supposed to at least go through that intersection, but I could be wrong, but um
Yeah, we'll we'll
just take a look at it.
Take take a look at that.
I I remember discussing Twentieth and Dakota because it is somewhat problematic, it's not uh but it was a I mean, you couldn't mill and overlay that like you did the rest of it, it wasn't, people say, oh, the city forgot to do that. Wasn't that, it was a concrete thing and could not be done.
It's kind of kind of broken, we sealed, it's not really moving anywhere, it it looks fairly sketchy, but it it's pretty solid. Uh so yes, we can revisit that as we move these plans forward. I would would also say that we are somewhat at the mercy of the price of uh construction materials and we get ready. Uh there may be uh something that has to fall off the bottom of this list and we will certainly provide that to city manager uh in order for us to stay within budget.
And my, thank you. And my final uh comment or question is, and it it's not part of this twenty 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 twenty-one pavement management plan, but we had great success, the project that took uh what, about a year and a half in terms of Thornton? So what's, is it, are we thinking forward, forward, um is there a a road that we're looking at that would be kind of a, you know, a similar type project with respect to scale uh in the in the future?
Uh not as part of the pavement management program. There may be other goals that the commission would be to discuss with city manager. Uh we would certainly have some input and thoughts on that, but I'm not aware that we're pursuing a specific project.
I've gotten some, I mean, there's certain roads that fit into that category, I've gotten some feedback.
Vilas from tenth, tenth to fifteen.
So I just, I just, yeah, maybe we can talk about that a little bit during the goals, the goals discussion, but um because that was a very expensive project, but it was done very well and it took what about a year and a half to get done.
Yeah, it's about two and a half years of pavement management, it's about, you know, these are about two million, it's about five and a half or six.
Yeah, yeah, that that's bonded, we're bonded in those projects, these are, these are strictly cash projects here.
Yeah, I'm excited about it, though, it looks good and I don't have any further comments, thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Mr. McDonald.
I'm gonna make a couple of comments real quick. Um I I think we're gonna put this out once it's finalized and um it's the, I would say, even more so than last year, it's the largest pavement management project this in the city's history will will be next year. We've bumped it up to two point two million, even though we're, you know, we're kind of capped at two, we want to have as much designed as we can. Um I also want to point out to the the downtown, the amount of work that is in the downtown um planned, Cherokee, Delaware and Shawnee. Uh Cherokee is an alternate, we also have um Second Street uh through the We also have 2nd Street through the downtown and then also Esplanade. And the reason we added that was to further enhance our Camp Leavenworth event. And then also, really proud of the sections of the large section of Broadway. Again, that capitalizes off the Thornton Street, a lot of people taking Thornton Street, and then they go north, south off Broadway. So to what Commissioner Griswold said, I think when we do formulate this, it is in the idea of you do this, you do an east-west section, then you do a north-south spur off that and you try to continue to get these corridors improved. So, and then finally, you know, Mike touched on it a little bit, but when Lansing spruced up the intersection of Eisenhower and DeSoto, you know, it really shined a light on the area in front of Dillon's. And so we were able to, that's a very expensive section. That's like 20th Street. It's concrete. But we do have a pretty good section of Eisenhower to continue the work that Lansing did.
Good, because I commented on it a while back.
As we move along that corridor. So that speaks a little bit to the thought and consideration that we put in over each area of these.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Good rundown.
Yep, thank you, Mr. McDonald.
I love it when our plans come together.
I know, I know. Yeah, one, you see results and it's looking good. Okay, just wrapping it up, Mr. Kramer, did you have anything further?
I just wanted to let Commissioner Price and you know that Turnaround Day is March 5th. For the state legislature conference committee is April 6th through the 9th, and the veto session is on May 3rd. So we'll continue to watch Senate Bill 13. We'll check with the League to see what they think about the House substitute, if they think that's going to be the bill that ends up going. And then I'll come back to the Commission if we have any recommendations on input to our legislatures at this point.
Okay. Commissioner Price?
Just a reminder to everyone, trash pickup's been delayed two days this week. Normally a one day for the President's Day, but because of the excessive cold, the city manager waved them off today. So if Tuesday's your normal day, it's now Thursday, Wednesday's Friday. I guess they're working Saturday. Is that right, Mr. Kramer?
Thursday, Saturday.
Yeah, so that's, so have your trash ready. Those guys work very hard and it's just, you know, certain times of the year, mid-July through mid-August, and this time of year, it's a very tough job. It's a tough job all the time, but it's especially tough now. And I'd also like to commend the Street Department on the snow removal. Once again, another tough job. Normally, and especially in February, you can skin the street and it's going to be warm enough, get some radiant heat from the sun, and it's going to melt off the snow, even if it's, you know, in the 20s. Obviously, it hasn't been in the 20s. It's been a lot lower. Their salt compounds do not work. Streets that are heavily traveled tend to get smoother or get snow removal. But I was going down 4th Street, State Highway, from Eisenhower north to, let's say, the VA Center, Muncie Road. The main lanes were clear, obviously lots of traffic. But the center portion was like a median all the way through. It's still thick snow. And that's one that gets cleared. And so people that expected to get, you know, shaved down to the street level, it just can't happen in these when it's zero and below, or below, probably below about 10 or 15 degrees. Today was much better. We finally got some radiant heat from the sun. But are they still calling for snow tonight, Mr. McDonald?
Another storm this evening. They are on their shift.
One to two inches, maybe?
Up to two inches.
So you got crews mobilized?
We are hoping to get the solar-powered snow removal system out again tomorrow, but it'll be high of 20, which will help in any case.
And we'll get the sun on it. The sun helps as much as anything.
And I cannot recall we have ever had this many days of back-to-back, basically 12-hour shifts. Some were eight, some were 12. But it's been going on for, what, 10 days now, I think?
Yeah, it's kind of the longest, coldest streak in history for 50, last 50 years or something.
Yeah, pass along our thanks to the crews.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Good job and it's long hours. And they're, I think, really paying good attention to what they're doing. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And also commendation to Parks and Rec, Mr. Kramer, Mr. Grant, for setting up the community center as a vaccination site. And I think that's worked very well. I don't know if they got delayed this week because of the weather or not, but I think that's worked very well. A lot of positive comments on that. And Leavenworth County seems to have gotten quite a few inoculations of the vaccines. I know the Veteran VA Center has pushed out a lot, probably Fort Leavenworth has too. So hopefully, now vaccinations will get in people's arms. That this thing will become past tense at some time in the near future. I don't know when, but hopefully it will. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, pro temp, I have nothing additional for the order tonight, so.
Okay, yeah, I have a couple of things. Yeah, in reference to the vaccine site down the road from Community Center, yeah, I got a lot of really good compliments from people or comments. And especially when you see on TV where other communities are making people stand outside. And it's like, you know, the temperatures are unbearing anyway. So they're like, you know, they're like, "Well, I'll end up getting sick while I'm trying to get a vaccine." And so I said, you know, Leavenworth County and the city, Leavenworth, we're not setting it up like that, you know? A little bit smarter. Two other things. I know this was already in the paper, but I always like to reiterate it. The applications are being accepted for the senior rebate program. This provides relief for city sewer and refuge charges. 62 years or older, and you have to meet income eligibility requirements. Now, if you're already enrolled, you will automatically be renewed this year. But if not, the application period, it ends April 15th. And if you want more information on that, you know, you can either come down or call the city clerk's office. Right, 682-9201. And then I always, I know Mr. Kramer brought this up. I think, I don't know if it was last week or the week before, but you know, pothole repairs are, right, are starting. So if you see a pothole, call 682-0650. So that is all I have. So everyone have a great weekend and we'll see you next week.